Good evening and welcome to the December 12th, 2016 Hillsborough Township Board of Education. Meeting, I'd like to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 8th, 2016 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Like to have a roll call, please. Mr. Miloud.
Hello, Mr. Kinst. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Setafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kinst?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We can rise for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have correspondence, this is listed in the agenda, and I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kinst. Every month, we do a spotlight on students where we highlight the great things that are going on throughout our district. Tonight, we have students from the high school, we're going to be recognizing some student athletes, as well as some activities through co-curricular. So, I believe I did see the principal of Hillsborough High School, Ms. Karen Binger, please welcome her to the podium.
Good evening, Dr. Schiff, members of the Board of Education, and hello from a very short principal. It is really my honor this evening to present a very special group to you. If you reflect back on your own high school experiences, those of us who are out of high school at this point, as a principal, I would love to say that we all remember the rigorous courses we took, those killer projects that we did that we're very proud of, those intellectually stimulating moments in classes, but odds are, we remember dances, spirit night, and the time we spent with friends where we got to figure out who we really were as young adults. And behind the scenes, making all of those wonderful experiences happen, is the high school Student Council. So, it's my pleasure to introduce you tonight to Mrs. Brogan and Mr. Wyatt, who are our Student Council advisors, who are then going to introduce Student Council members to you and just tell you a little bit about what this amazing group of student leaders does for us at Hillsborough High School. Mrs. Brogan and Mr. Wyatt.
Hello, everyone. Hello, members of the board. Good evening, and thank you to Ms. Binger for recognizing us tonight, it really means a lot to us to get to say what we do. Brandon and I have been running Student Council for about thirteen or fourteen years, which sounds like a really long time, and it really is, because I feel like I just started teaching about three years ago. But it's one of the most rewarding organizations that we could be a part of. I do multiple clubs, he's a coach for multiple sports, and we both just generally love Student Council. Each year, we spend hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars helping and enriching the lives of the HHS community, as well as our town. Our officers will tell you a little bit about what we do, but Brandon and I want to say how thankful we are to be the Student Council advisors. Each year, we work with the best of the best with the student body, like those behind us. Our officers are all athletes, peer mentors, members of countless other clubs, and they dedicate so much of their time before and after school, and we're so grateful for them. Our Student Council is made up of about fifty members of all the grades, some are officers for other class cabinets, and others are people that just want to dedicate their time to making Hillsborough High School a happier place. As Ms. Binger said, Student Council does run Spirit Night, but to us, there's so much more than just Spirit Night, although it is our favorite night of the year. But most people don't know about the Senior Citizen Night, the Women's Shelter Party, the canned food drives, the donations that we make. Whenever we hear about anyone in the community or surrounding areas that needs help, Student Council does whatever we can to help them. I could go on for hours, but I'm going to let my officers take over, but before I do, I just want to introduce them. Our president is Danny Kazimbo. Our vice president is Carly Swets. Our secretary, in his fantastic floral shirt, is Jack Edwards. Our treasurer is Nick Pezza. And our Board of Education representative, who I'm sure you all know, is Gillian Booth.
Hi, everyone. My name is Danny Kazimbo, and I'm the president of Student Council, and so I'm just going to try and touch upon what Mrs. Brogan would call our favorite night of the year, Spirit Night. So, every year, Hillsborough High School Student Council holds an event that almost everyone across the Hillsborough community is familiar with, Spirit Night. On Spirit Night, each grade with its individual theme competes against the other in fierce, intense competitions, like the three-legged race, the hula hoop challenge, and the scooter relay. Additionally, they compete in challenges that they've been working on for the entire year, like the movie, the mural, the float, and the dance, all of which correlate to the grade's individual theme. The amount of pure fun and excitement that surrounds this event cannot be understated as months and months of work and practice culminate into a single night. This is the one night that every single student in the school's population, regardless of backgrounds or interests, looks forward to. Spirit Night is our school's uniting factor, bringing together all types of students in each grade to work together with a common cause. All year, around the clock, we, and especially our wonderful advisors, Ms. Brogan and Mr. Wyatt, work as hard as we can to make Spirit Night a success. We hold lunchtime activities and Spirit Days, where the students dress in a certain theme, to provide opportunities for students to earn points for their grades. Come time of the actual event, we are working non-stop to make sure everything is set up perfectly, from the setup of the gym to the tallying of the points. All in all, Student Council really wants to ensure that Spirit Night is an event that is nothing short of memorable every single year.
Hi, I'm Carly Swets, I'm the vice president, and I'll be talking about another major part of what we do, which is raising money that we then donate. We sponsor activities throughout the school, such as the canned food drive, the soda tab drive, and the penny drive. These are all aimed at working together as a school to raise money and help the community. Therefore, we give the soda tabs to the Ronald McDonald House and donate all of the money raised from the penny drive to various charities. Last year, the penny drive was incredibly successful, and we ended up raising $2,000. We then matched this amount with other savings and donated $4,000 to the local organization known as Steps Together. This year, we donated $1,000, as well as gift cards for Christmas, to the family that lost their apartment to the fire. We also recently gave money to the family of Officer Whacker. In June, Student Council will give anywhere between $4,000 to $7,000 to seniors for the Student Council Scholarship. Our goal is to earn money through fundraising and then be able to give as much of it back to the people of Hillsborough and the surrounding areas.
Hello, I'm Nick Pezza, I'm the treasurer of Student Council. I'm here to tell you about Spirit Days and lunchtime activities. Spirit Days consist of all the students dressing up in a certain attire to show off school spirit or for certain event causes. We have our famed days like Slipper Days, Pajama Days, Halloween, and Flannel Day, which happened this past Friday. We also have Wear Pink Day for breast cancer awareness, and to dress up in camo, red, white, and blue for Veterans Day. For each student that takes part in the Spirit Days, they earn Spirit Points for the grade. Another great way to earn Spirit Points for your grade is to do lunchtime activities. Things like the Mummy Wrap and the Hula Hoop Challenge can leave all the lunch tables watching the whole time. They take place during each lunchtime period on a certain day, and then give the Spirit Points to the winning grade. Most activities include at least two students for each grade per period. This is a great way to get the whole school involved and ready for the new year.
Hi, I'm Gillian Booth, and I'm going to be talking about the dances that we hold. Something that most students in the school look forward to throughout the year are the homecoming and snowball dances. Homecoming, except for this year, always takes place in October, the day after a home football game. Snowball takes place every February. Every year, Student Council spends countless hours working to make sure that each dance is better than the last. The dances serve as a way to foster school spirit and camaraderie between all four grades. They help students get involved in the school, whether through helping set up, sell tickets, or just go into the dance with the rest of the school. Not only this, but the dances are a large fundraiser for the school. This way, we are able to give more to the charities Carly spoke of earlier. Not very many other schools are as fortunate as to have several dances throughout this school year, and it is extremely rewarding to know that we are a large part of making that happen for HHS.
In addition to raising money and donating it, as Carly mentioned, we also take a more hands-on approach to helping the community in two ways. One, by running a senior citizen dinner in the spring, and a holiday party for the women's shelter in the winter. So, starting with the senior citizen dinner, each year, we invite about 200 people that are a part of citizen groups A and B, and prepare them a pasta dinner. Students from each grade volunteer to be cooks, waiters, or greeters as we serve them a three-course meal. After the dinner portion is over, the senior citizens get a free dress rehearsal of the school musical right before the opening night. This was an event that was started about eight years ago, and we love being able to connect more with members of the community. In addition to that, we also have the holiday party, which took place last Wednesday night. The Student Council and the class cabinet helped run a holiday party for the women's shelter. We team up with Safe and Sound, which is across the street from the high school, to put together a memorable night for these women and their children. Student Council donates around $5,000 from our homecoming profits each year to pay for the food, the decorations, the DJ, and all of the gifts for the children. And also, presents for their moms. Student Council served as elves for Santa, and the class cabinets had stations for the kids to have fun with. We really love these two events specifically because we definitely directly see the benefits that we have on people from our community, and on behalf of all the Student Council, we would like to thank you all for letting us explain what we do. Thank you.
Now, I think we have Mr. Finisi, who's also here tonight to share with us some of the wonderful things that are going on in our athletic programs. Please welcome Mr. Mike Finisi to the podium.
Good evening, President Kinst, Board of Ed members, Dr. Schiff, and Central Office Administration. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to showcase our student athletes this evening, and talk about some of their accolades. I also want to make note that the five leaders of our Student Council are all members of the Hillsborough High School Athletic Program as well, so, very good guys. First off, I'd like to bring up our girls' soccer team, led by Coach Best and Coach Devaleski. Please come on up, ladies. Come on up right over here. We define success in various ways. These young ladies, we did not win a championship and don't have a trophy, however, the state tournament, being down 3-0 to a top-10 state team and coming back with five goals in the second half, was something that I'll never forget, and I know I mentioned it to you girls on the bus that day, that was tremendous. These young ladies, along with the Booster Club and our coaches, have raised close to $18,000 for their campaign, which is called Kick Out Cancer. And Coach Best and the Booster Club's close to $18,000 in seven years. Their senior class themselves, which are, there's a couple seniors here, have raised close to $10,000 for the cancer. That goes to Dance for the Cure, which I believe is a Hillsborough-based charity organization. So, I'd like to congratulate these ladies on their hard work and efforts. Not only are they student athletes, but they do some great stuff outside the classroom The next group I'd like to bring up this evening is our girls' volleyball team, Coach As you can see, the discipline that Coach Ione has with her athletes, even when they come to a board meeting, they all have to dress alike. Just like their practices. So, these young ladies, under the direction of Coach Ione, who've been working really hard over the years, and they've been knocking on the door of a number of championships over the years, being in the finals and just couldn't push it over the edge. This year, they won the Marsonoles Invitational Championship, and they were Somerset County champs for the first time in school history. They had a 16-8 record and finished number 20 in the state in volleyball, which is definitely a great accomplishment for our girls' volleyball program. Thank you. Just to mention, Coach Ione is in the State Coaches Hall of Fame also. Like to bring up Coach Rich Reefee and the girls' cross-country program. All right. Thanks, ladies. Well, if you've ever seen a pack of young ladies or men running through town, that's these guys, they put on a lot of miles every single day. These young ladies won the Cherokee Challenge to start the year, they've also won the Central Jersey Group Four sectional title, the second year in a row, and they qualified for to meet the champs and finished seventh and ranked number seven in the state in cross-country. We also had a young lady on our team, placed fourth in the Northeast Regional, which is the eight states in the northeastern part of the country, and she qualified to go on to Oregon and ran nationally and represented Hillsborough, 86th out of the 200 runners that qualified. That's Ms. Chloe Wong. Thank you, guys. Our last group for the evening I'm going to bring up is Coach Beth Mern and the gymnastics Like to also mention, Coach Reefee is in the State Coaches Hall of Fame as well. These young ladies, you ever walk through the gym and see people flying through the air, that's these young ladies here, probably the toughest kids in our school. Every time I walk through there, it's amazing what they can do, and all the bandages and things on their knees and whatever, but they successfully became the Somerset County Champions for the third time in a row, the Skyline Conference Regular Season Champs for the third time in a row, as well as the Central Two Sectional Champions for the third time in a row. They extended their undefeated record to 29 straight meets without a loss over three seasons. Individually, senior Keira Salt was the 2016 Somerset County Vault Champion, sophomore Cindy Liu was the 2016 Skyline Conference Balance Beam Champion, junior Kelly Brady was the 2016 Central Jersey Two Vault and Uneven Bar Champion, and freshman Samantha Ringo was the 2016 Central Two Balance Beam and All-Around Champion. So, we have a great opportunity here to recognize the girls' gymnastics team. And I don't want to forget, Coach Mern is also in the State Coaches Hall of Fame. In closing, it's always nice to acknowledge championships, but 495 fall, 305 winter, and 455 spring athletes dedicated themselves with their coaches to a six-day-a-week commitment per season, and were able to keep up their strong academic standards, and as you can see from this evening, some other activities as well. To me, this is an accomplishment for all our athletes, and they are always going to be champions to me as their proud athletic director. So, thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. Be safe and have a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you. We would like to also thank our athletic director, our high school principal, all of the coaches, as well as the advisors, but most importantly, all of our students, for doing such a phenomenal job. Let's give them another round of applause. At this time, I'd like to ask the Board's consideration for a brief five-minute recess so that they can congratulate you directly.
Let's take a five-minute recess. Thank you. All right, we're back in session, and I'll hand it back over to Dr. Schiff to continue with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kinst. I'm pleased to be able to share some good news from around the district with our board members and our community this evening. I'm so proud of the students on Team 6D at Autton Road Intermediate School. This team was encouraged by kid president to do something good, to make their world a more awesome place. The team participated in socktober and collected 813 pairs of socks, non-perishable food, and hygiene items and blankets to donate to visions and pathways which help temporarily displace children throughout the state of New Jersey. Thank you to 6D teachers Jamie Cameron, Mary Beth Hughes, John Kaplan, Megan Kelly, Sean Lawn, and Amy Salinger, who organized the sock drive. Thank you also to the fifth-grade students in Ms. Sarah Byron Ashwell's homeroom, who added an additional 53 pairs of socks to the drive. Congratulations to the 6D students, you have definitely made our world a more awesome Congratulations also goes out to the middle school robotics team, the Buzzdroids, who competed in Borough Blast, the regional first LEGO League tournament at Hillsborough High School hosted by the Hillsborough Robotics Team 75. The HMS team took home the Robot Award for Mechanical Design, as well as second place in the robot competition. The award for Mechanical Design recognizes a team that designs and develops a mechanically sound robot that is durable and highly capable of performing challenging missions. Congratulations to the Buzzdroids. And I know we have a special presentation tonight for an outgoing board member, Mr. Dev Dada.
Just real quick, the Buzzdroids, those are the ones that had the bumblebee theme, so, that's funny. Okay, so, I'd like to take a few moments to speak on behalf of the Board of Education and thank one of our board members, Mr. Debius, otherwise better known as Dev Dada, for his time and efforts as a member of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. This evening is one of Dev's last meetings, and I want to thank him personally and on behalf of the Board for his service over the past three years. Dev and the other board members who sit at this dais twice a month do so as volunteers. In addition to the two public board meetings that we have per month, Dev and the other board members also attend monthly committee meetings, review educational materials, attend student and staff events, meet with community members to get and understand the will of the community. In November 2013, Dev was elected to the Board of Education and served on the Operations Committee, as well as in the Education Committee, and was a member of our negotiations team. During Dev's three-year term, he has been an adamant supporter of expanding STEM opportunities for Hillsborough students at all levels, and he has also brought real-world perspectives to these endeavors. Dev has dedicated many hours over his last three years as a Board of Education member to making our schools a great place for students to learn and staff members to work. As an elected official, Dev's decisions take into account the needs and priorities of Hillsborough schools while balancing it with the financial concerns that face Hillsborough community members. Dev, thank you for devoting your time and energy during your three-year term, you still have one more meeting left, and you've been a valuable member of the Hillsborough Board of Education. At this time, I'd like to present with you this plaque as a token of our gratitude for your dedication to the children, staff, and community of Hillsborough. Thank you. On the agenda, you'll see an item for a non-action agenda discussion item. Actually, we're going to hold this at the next meeting, but what we were, what the intent of this is, we meet twice a month. The first meeting of the month is for Spotlight on Students, which we just had, and then on the second meeting, what the goal is, is to, you know, a lot of the time when we have our meeting, it's the action agenda, we're approving items, approving policies, but we don't have much time to actually discuss issues, only as they come up in the agenda. So, the intent for this is, on the second meeting of the month, to talk about different issues, so whether it's student performance, issues with the strategic plan, legislative issues that are either, have been just passed or are being considered, or other issues that, as board members, is important for us to have. It's a way for us to have a dialogue on issues, and it's in a non-action format, so that we can have conversations about things that either may be in committee, that we can talk as a whole, or other issues like that. So, we have the first, the first item is thought-provoking data, strategic planning for our strategic plan 2017-22. Dr. Schiff sent some information this morning. I wanted to give board members an opportunity to actually review the information, so that when we have our discussion, we can make reference to that, and people can have time to reflect and think, and then have a discussion. So, it's something we're going to try to do, and we'll see how that goes. So, we will have that for next Monday's meeting. Okay, now, I'd like to go on the next item, which is approval of minutes, and I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on November 28th, 2016. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Yeah. And Dev? And Dana? Yeah, motion passes? Okay. And committee reports? Okay, so, we have HR, we'll start first.
Yes, today, don't have much to report, but we have a couple of items. We met last week for November, and again, tonight, so some of it will overlap between the two meetings. There was a discussion from the administrative level about responsibilities between special education and guidance, and who helps with transitions. So, they'll be actually writing two different job descriptions, and 504s will be taken over by guidance at the high school instead of special ed. So, that will be coming. Last meeting, we approved an extra aide, and we will be approving two and a half more aides based on needs and IEPs in the district. So, that's been on our agenda. There's been discussion amongst the members about evaluations of coaches, so an evaluation process has been put in place by administration. There is a tool that they have put together and will be using for the coaching staff going forward, and then there are several items that still remain confidential at this time.
Okay, thank you. From Governance Committee, we met on Monday, December 5th. Items that we discussed, and as you'll find in your minutes, is we talked about the district's strategic plan and the committee work group, so we had Dr. Banlow from the EIRC, who we, the EIRC we contracted a while ago. So, he was reviewing with us the documentation that he's put together for the various administrative board and community input sessions, and then also to lay out the next steps and the activities over this coming year. So, be seeing that. And then we also had an opportunity to look at the board self-evaluation that was performed a while back, in addition to the superintendent evaluation, and that'll be coming out to all the board members. And that's what we have for the Governance Committee. Okay, any discussion on any of those? Okay. Now, I'd like to open up to public comment, and we're going to do it in different stages. So, the first one is actually on the public input for the 2017-2018 budget, and we very much welcome and value input from the public. There are two times during board meetings when the public is invited to speak. One time is right now for items with regard to the 2017-18 budget. After this, we'll then have items that will be listed on tonight's Action Agenda or New Business, and then there'll be another public forum towards the end of the meeting about any topic. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Before you make your comments, please state your name and address, and if you have a group affiliation, that too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Dima, and I live at 6th Grouse Road. As a follow-up to my email that was sent to the board, I am here to request the addition to the budget for a seventh-grade field hockey coach, and I brought our sixth grade, mostly sixth graders and some eighth graders along. Our town now has a successful feeder program with kids from kindergarten through sixth grade who will be looking to continue their field hockey career in seventh grade. The opportunity for them to play in the seventh grade offers the continuity in the sport that our town needs, and as we just saw from all those high school sports, that field hockey program was not here. So, we want to build it from the ground up. In addition, I believe by adding this position, we are improving the success- In addition, I believe by adding this position, we are improving the success of our eighth grade team and high school teams, which allow us to be able to compete amongst our neighboring opponents. I was lucky to see my daughter play field hockey in seventh and eighth grade, and not only did her skills improve, but so did her confidence, and she's now ready to try it out at a high school level. So I hope you agree with us on providing this opportunity to all the incoming seventh graders. Thank you.
All right, thank you.[622.54][622.54](APPLAUSE).
Hi, I'm Kristin Crusoe, a sixth grader here at Otten Road. I'm here today to talk about a problem addressing the middle school field hockey team. Currently, there is only one middle school team, including both seventh and eighth graders. We believe that there should be two teams, one for each grade. We are aware that the coaches of the team were brought up to the high school team. However, we didn't think seventh graders should have to go up against more experienced and skilled eighth graders. Not making the team could be a result of discouragement, as well as a lack of confidence. To prove that people care about this problem, fellow teammates and I created a petition and got about one hundred signatures, students as well as adults. As a team, we proved that this is a problem that we are not okay with. We proved that people care about this amazing sport we love called field hockey. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin.[683.62][683.62](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Gabriela Aruza. I attend Otten Road Intermediate School. I hope that we can get coaches for the seventh and eighth grade team, so that I could play in the middle school. I really enjoy playing, and I hope I can find, we can find a coach. Thank you, and I hope you keep this in mind.
Thank you, Gabriela.[713.32][713.32](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Kylie Freeman, and I am a sixth grader at Otten Road Intermediate School. I have had the pleasure of doing field hockey for the past two years, and I really enjoyed it. I hope I can continue to enjoy playing and having fun with my team. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie.[732.04][732.04](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Madison Freeman. I am in third grade and enjoy playing in field hockey. I'm always on the sideline watching my older sister play sixth-grade field hockey. I hope I can watch her play in middle school, and can't wait to play just like her. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison.[754.13][754.13](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Alexis. I watch my older sister play field hockey in seventh and eighth grade, and I have the same opportunity as she did. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis.[768.11][768.11](APPLAUSE).
Hi, my name is Lindsay Kowalski, and I have had the pleasure to play field hockey for this one year. I wanted to make the middle school team, but I worried that I couldn't be able to because of the more experienced girls, such as the eighth graders. And by adding a seventh grade team, me and my other teammates can make a seventh grade team and keep enjoying field hockey. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Lindsay.[793.12][793.12](APPLAUSE).
Hello, my name is Kylie Marley. I'm a sixth grader at Otten Road. I've been playing field hockey for a couple of years now, and it has impacted my life tremendously. Every time I step onto the field, a sense of joy and happiness fills my heart. At our first practice this past season, it was the quietest practice I've ever experienced. Nobody talked, none of the players said a word to one, to one another, as this was a new experience for most of us. By the end of the season, my team was my family. We had been through thick and thin together. Some of us came to the team not even knowing how to hold a stick properly. Because of our hard work, dedication to field hockey, and to one another, we ended our season taking fifth place in a tournament with fifteen other teams. I honestly can't imagine a world without my team next year. Please consider creating a seventh-grade field hockey team. If the seventh and eighth graders are mixed together next year, many members of my team will no longer have a chance to play. That means, that means some seventh graders will not be able to continue playing the sport that they love. On behalf of my teammates and I, please consider this idea of creating a seventh-grade field hockey team. Thank you for your time.[865.56][865.56](APPLAUSE).
My name is Chrissy Freeman. I live at two zero four Shilky Lane in Hillsborough. This year, I had the pleasure of not only watching both of my daughters play a sport that I was very passionate about when I was younger, but I got to be a head coach of the third graders, junior Raiders Field Hockey Team this year, and unofficial assistant to the sixth graders to help out my daughter. This program was in its first year, in its first year, it drew a lot of attention from the girls, a lot of parents on board, very supportive. Working with the third graders just to see how excited they are, to like, look forward to next year, and we're only going to grow from here. And now watching these sixth graders, we were so sad at the end, even though we were, we actually ended on an awesome note. We didn't really win any games during the season, but we grew as a team, our skills and talents grew, and in our tournament, I'm happy to say, out of four round-robin games, we won three of them and tied one, which we actually should have won, because it wasn't fair. But no, we all played awesome. The girls all not only learned to love the game, they learned a skill, they learned to work together. There is so much positiveness in these girls, they're like a family. And to see them, you know, have to compete is one thing, but to see them, you know, not be able to pursue this next year at the seventh grade level, to grow into eighth grade and into high school, I think just as a town in ourselves, Hillsborough, to promote that, it can only be good. I'd hate to see these girls have to go to private programs and see them excel there, and then lose interest in the sports here in town. So I think it's only a benefit for us to just keep growing and growing and growing, to keep kids in school, just like we saw our high school schoolers tonight. They keep up their grades, they keep it good at home. It's just all positive. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Freeman.[997.88][997.88](APPLAUSE).
Good evening. My name is Heather Sarachi.
And I'm Olivia Helverson.
And we are currently eighth graders at the Hillsborough Middle School, and this season, we only had one coach for both seventh and eighth grade, and we are here to tell you why it is beneficial to have two coaches, one for seventh and one for eighth grade. To start, two coaches would benefit the incoming players, the seventh graders. It will benefit them to be motivated to continue field hockey throughout high school.
And also, it will also give them an extra year to add on, because the eighth grade and seventh grade field hockey is very different. So it will prepare them for their next and future years of field hockey. It will also encourage, if they have younger sisters, to grow the program throughout.
Yes, and we also, we were junior coaches for the junior Raiders program. We got to see how the, how the girls developed and grew over the course of the season. So, yeah, we would really appreciate it if there were two coaches. We would love to see their skills grow as they continue their field hockey career. Thank you.
Thank you.[1074.61][1074.61](APPLAUSE). Okay, thanks, everyone.
Budget?
Better be good, or I'm going to sit down. Good evening, members of the board, Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, as well as Laurel Drive. As we talk about budget, I ask you to reflect on last year and this year, and notice the common themes that are coming up in the discussions from the people in the town, the students, the staff. And no pointer is anyone saying we need to expend more money in technology. They're asking for opportunities for the students, they're asking for investments in the physical plants of the building, they're asking for investments in the staff to further their abilities to serve these wonderful students. And I think recent events only highlight this need more than anything. There is very little point in bringing technology into a classroom when we can't keep raw sewage, rainwater, and mold out of a classroom. Thank you.
Thank you.[1146.14][1146.14](APPLAUSE). Okay, now we're moving on to public comment with regard to items from the Action Agenda or New Business. So again, same, same things apply, opportunity to provide comment. It's not public, and it's not a question-and-answer session, so looking to see if there's any public comment on the Action Agenda or New Business. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the Action Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that we're making under the area of education, to approve travel and related expenses, to affirm the HIB determination list, approve the overnight field trip as listed, approve curriculum writing, and to appoint the district's Section 504 officer.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items ten point one through ten point five of the Action Agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Senta Fonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dada?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes, continue on. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm making under the area of human resources, to approve the retirements and resignations. We have Christine Dimitru, who's an instructional assistant, who has been with the district since two thousand and three, and we'd like to thank her for her dedication and services to our children. To approve the revised retirement, leaves of absences, revised leaves of absences, and to approve the appointments of teachers, a lunch aid, a co-curricular advisor, and substitutes as per attached. To approve the mentors as listed, revised mentors, student teachers, to approve the pre, pre-approval extra period coverage, and to approve extra period coverage as attached.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items eleven point one through eleven point ten of the Action Agenda.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dada? Okay, any discussion? Okay.
Please. Read out eleven five, please.
Okay. Okay, so this will be for eleven point one through eleven point four, and eleven point six through eleven point ten. Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Senta Fonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dada?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Abstained.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes, continue on. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve transportation contracts as list, as listed, and two different special education settlement agreements.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items twelve point one through twelve point three of the Action Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I heard, and then Jen? Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Senta Fonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Dada?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay, now, at that end of the Action Agenda, I'd like to open it up for comments from the public, and this could be on old business or any, any other topic. Name and address, please, sir.
Hal Brown, Stonewick Drive in Hillsborough. Probably no surprise that I'm here tonight in view of the Star Ledger stories about Field Turf, since you decided to do business with that company despite my prior warnings about their possible ethics problems. Iman was very good about giving me a lot of information prior to the meeting. I've got to compliment him on the transparency. That's something that prior boards, before Dr. Schiff got here, was an issue. So I think that when you said you were transparent, Tom, I tend to believe you, and I think we're lucky to have a business administrator that we have.
Thank you.
My question on the field, it's not the board, it's not the turf committee, if there was one, that I've got an issue with. It's who made the recommendation that you go with Field Turf? It's my understanding those specs were kind of written towards Field Turf, which is a questionable practice.
I don't know about that allegation, about the specs. I know that the specs went through legal review, and then it was an open, it was an open bidding process.
But the committee didn't come back and say, go with Field Turf?
No, they did not. There wasn't, there's, a committee is not able to make a recommendation for a specific item if it's going to public bid, and it goes to the, and it goes to the winning bid.
But the paperwork that I gave you, Tom, and you were the only one on the, the board who asked to see my paperwork, I don't know if you shared it with anybody, but it showed lawsuits from coast to coast involving Field Turf and a question on their product. Must have raised a flag with somebody. I mean, Iman caught it that the competitive, the buying group had an issue. They never went to competitive bid. So, you know, to do business with them may have been illegal. Fortunately, like I say, Iman flagged it, and something was done.
Right.
And you followed the rules as far as getting the bids, but you knew you had a problem with that vendor. Who made the recommendation that you go with them?
As I, as I mentioned, it was an open bidding process.
Did your architect say, let's go with Field Turf?
No.
They never told you to go with Field Turf?
That's my understanding, is since it's an open bidding process, it goes to the lowest, lowest responsible bid, of which there were a number of bidders, from what I recall, there were two.
But you pay for, for professional services. You had two bidders? I thought it normally goes to three.
It's, it's whoever bids.
All right, so it was between Shaw and Field Turf?
Yep, those were the two, those are the people who, those are the two vendors who submitted bids.
Gee, and the buying group told you they had three.
So, yeah, whatever that third one chose not to, not to bid.
No, but I was, my understanding, the architect recommended you go with Field Turf. I've seen correspondence to that effect, or darn close to it.
He didn't say no.
Sure, if you're going to address that.
I think, Mr. Brown, yes, I think that the, our architect was not, the architect helped with the legal development of the specification, so there was involvement with the architect. Clearly, you know, we, I don't want to say that he said, you have to go with this. We went through the competitive process, but he was a part of that. He was a partner with the Board of Education as far as the engineering side and the development side. So there was a relationship with the board and the architect. He's there for that reason, is to work with the board. But, but he doesn't have control over competitive bid, so he can't say to the board, you have to pick this vendor over that vendor. What he can say is, the specs look good, you know, ultimately after the competitive bid process, he, like, like any other professional, would, would, you know, comment if he didn't want us to go in that direction. In this case, it was a valid bid, it was competitive, and he certainly did not say no not to use that particular vendor.
In view of all the lawsuits against that vendor, wouldn't it have been prudent for him to, a flag go up and say, wait a second, maybe we got to take a second look at these people?
I don't, I don't know whose responsibility, if that's the architect's, or if that's our legal piece, but we can, we can look into that.
Well, what I'm saying is, if they plead innocent, so their fingerprints are on this. And there's, with all the litigation that's now going on, and the government may step in, I mean, there's, I wouldn't be surprised if Tarkett spins off Field Turf and then they do a bankruptcy. Where are you with your eight-year warranty on your field? Who's responsible? Who protects the taxpayers in Hillsborough?
That's, we're going to have to find that out after it's done.
I'd like the board to consider going back to your architect, since I think they're responsible for Field Turf being here, and let them go to Lloyds of London and take out an insurance policy on your field.
Okay, thank you for your input.
If they go belly up, we're protected.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. As we've done in the past year, what I'd like to do is share with the board a couple of occurrences, some events that have taken place over the past couple of months that fall under what we call the heart of Hillsborough, its ways that our members give back to the community. Recently, what we've seen throughout the district, at HES, we had members go pink and raise over a hundred and eighty dollars for the Princeton Women's Health Center. We had the Sunny Mead staff come out and do a craft night that raised over eighteen hundred dollars for their benevolent fund that directly benefits families and students in need. And we also just had the Woodford staff hold a Barnes and Noble's night, where they read to the students, but they also collected new and gently-used books that will be donated to the Friends of Hillsborough Library. Thank you.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.[1796.76][1796.76](APPLAUSE).